Having a perfect attendance, the Chair declares approval. We request honorable Lim. Honorable Majority Leader Flora Leder.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. There are no guests or visitors available for our Honorable Chair. We take up item number five, approval of agenda for today. There are five waiting requests for inclusion about our addresses for the Sabinon's investigation. First, surrender of the honorable Mayor Anthony Hindi Pampayan Junior, dated eighteen November twenty two, requesting Osipari to pass resolution authorizing the local city initiative for the Honorable Pampayan Junior to enter into Alsign on behalf of San City, the minimum of a grant with the partner of health in relation to the grant of one COVID allowance, OCA, to the eligible healthcare workers of Iskendlaw, Minnowanara City, General Hospital, Honorable Chair. The second request is related with the twenty-one November twenty two, addressed to the Honorable Vice-Major Siprisia Bibi Honore from our City Mayor, Honorable Anthony Hindi Pampayan Junior, requesting Osipari to pass resolution expressing support for declaring interviewed watershed management plan currently here, twenty-two. The third request for inclusion, Honorable Chair, is a letter of again of our City Mayor, dated eighteen November twenty two, requesting this Osipari to enact resolution authorizing the local city initiative, Honorable Hendy Pampayan Junior, to enter into Alsign on behalf of San City, the minimum of a grant, Resintan Milenaw University, in relation to the conduct of the Kamen Resintan Milenaw University College Admission Test, C M U, C E T, and S A B C. The fourth, the third request for City Mayor is for us to pick up and consider passing the resolution authorizing City Mayor to enter into a minimum of a grant with paper products, service, division incorporated, and other more with machines, key management, and development cooperation, Honorable Chair. So there are five items requested for inclusion in our agenda for today's proposition, Honorable Chair. With this, I move the motion for approval of the agenda for today with five inclusions which I invited a while ago, Honorable Chair. The motion.
There is a motion manifested by the Honorable Majority Leader Flora Leder to approve of our agenda for today with five inclusions as being stipulated. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number six, approval of the minutes the previous sessions. In value as points capes of the minutes of our investigation on November seven, twenty two, and as well as the special session on November ten, twenty two, and was able to close three minutes, Honorable Chair, thereby a move, the motion, to dispense with the remaining minutes of our previous investigation on November seven, twenty two, and the special session on November ten, twenty two, and to approve sickness in total, Honorable Chair.
There is a motion from the Honorable Majority Leader Flora Leder for the approval of of the minutes of the previous sessions as being stipulated. Is there any comment? Remarks during that? Motion approved as being presented by the Honorable Majority Leader Flora Leder.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number seven, questioning of business with the seat to the seat, number one. Twenty-two, supplemental budget number one of barangay Delapan in amount of twenty-nine thousand. And number two, supplemental budget number one of barangay Dipusong in amount of hundred forty thousand. I urge the rest of the chairman of committee on barangay affairs, Honorable Jan Doktor, to introduce omnibusly actions on these particular items, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Jan Doktor, you may recognize the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Majority Leader Flora Leder. Thank you, Honorable Chair. With regards to the items, numbers one and two, Honorable Chair, the supplemental budget of the request supplemental budget approval of barangay Delapan in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-nine thousand. And the supplemental budget request of barangay Dipusong in the amount of one-hundred-forty thousand, Honorable Chair. I would like to pass an omnibus motion for this matter, Honorable Chair, on first reading with reservations.
On first reading with reservations, the Honorable Jan Doktor, Director on barangay affairs, passing this on the first reading with reservations, motion approved.
For the reasons of urgency and the necessity of implementing the the said request of the two barangays, Honorable Chair, for their supplemental budget, considering that all necessary documents as being required for this request, Honorable Chair, and also with the endorsement by our Budget Office, so I so move, Honorable Chair, for second and final reading for these two supplemental budget, mainly barangay Delapan in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-nine thousand and barangay Dipusong in the amount of one-hundred-forty thousand. For first reading, for second and final reading, we will our internal rules, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Jan Doktor. Due to the urgency of these requests for passage on the second and final reading, the item number one, twenty-two, supplemental budget number one, zero-one of barangay Delapan in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-nine thousand. And for item number two, twenty-two, supplemental budget number zero-one of barangay Dipusong in the amount of one-hundred-forty thousand. There is a motion from Honorable Jan Doktor to pass this on the second and final reading moving the internal rules. Is there any comment? Remarks during that? Motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number three, message communication, number one. During position paper of Osami's City Chamber of Commerce and Industry Foundation Incorporated, Osami Chamber and Osami's Filipino-Chinese Chamber of Commerce, O F C C regarding the proposed real property fair market value and assessment level. If we remember, if we remember, Honorable Chair, this coming Thursday, November twenty-four, at nine-thirty in the morning, we will have again our second round of public hearing on the revision of our fair market values and civic levels of real property, property share in San City, Honorable Chair. And we are glad that we will be able to tackle masks on that day because it started in the morning at nine-thirty. It can proceed onwards until in the afternoon. And the Chamber of Commerce, O F C C, a member or the president offers his generosity in providing for lands to all the attendees in that coming public hearing. Last public hearing, they were all these, hundred twenty-eight attendees. And this morning, the generous businessman, Mr. Arthur Chan Phaylong, contacted Honorable Danilau and asked him if the attendees prefer pack lands or buffet. I told Honorable Danilau it is only better that it will be packed lands the buffet might be too much generosity for the part of our generous donor. So I told him that the attendees last public hearing is hundred twenty-eight. It is up for Mr. Arthur Chan to determine how many he will have to prepare it. He wants to provide reservations for additional attendees, Honorable Chair. So I think we have prepared for the public hearing this coming Thursday. We connected campuses with our staff of the City Service Office with the permission of the City Mayor, Honorable Anthony Hindi Pampayan. The two committees of the committee on which I may shared by Honorable Danilau and my committee of financial provision, we tackled with the staff, the acting advisor, Mr. Samuel Istotan, his other personnel at City Service Office, and we also asked the assistant and head of Honorable City Co. who represents also the businessman of San City, Honorable Chair. And we inquired from City Office valuable reliable material provision which could help us understand this basis of revision of our fair market values of real property of San City, Honorable Chair. And now, because this every but a matter, I yield to my colleagues for any remarks, observations, and comments on this. During the development of the San City Chamber of Commerce and Industry and as well as of the San City, Chinese, San of Commerce, Honorable Chair, to assign a session on this the businessman provides the witnesses. Items one to five, one to eight in their position paper about the coming of the business environment in San City and sensing that this revision would bring about increase in taxes of fair market tax taxes. So the wish that it will be a question for this increase are the purpose and average of more or less forty percent in the fair market value of the the commercial properties and sixty percent more or less on the residential properties. There was no particular proposal on the agricultural and the industrial, industrial lands, Honorable Chair. They focus their their proposal to the commercial and residential areas which are most prevailing in our city of Osami, Honorable Chair. So I started the commerce and I yield to my colleagues for any further comments for us to be able to prepare for this coming public hearing because we have to answer all the questions of the stakeholders particularly the businessman on our proposed revisions and we have a corresponding increase in taxes although our real property tax is constant as constant rate of two and one hundred percent. So I yield to my colleagues for any possible discussions that could help us clarify matters aside from the office or season which will be coming also Thursday. The office of City Service Office are also coming, their staff, Honorable Chair, to help in the reviewing of revision to our stakeholders in San City who will be affected by this particular undertaking of revision of the fair market values of our real properties in San City. Now I will make colleagues for any further discussion, Honorable Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Majority Leader Flora Leder. Yes, we are in receipt of this reply from the Osami City Chamber of Commerce and Industry Foundation Incorporated and the Osami's Filipino-Chinese Chamber of Commerce regarding the joint position paper on the proposed real property fair market value and assessment level manifested by the Honorable Majority Leader Flora Leder that we have to study this carefully on this coming tomorrow or
Thursday.
Thursday, November twenty-four, regarding this particular discussion. We will be having a bloody discussion regarding this. Yes, Honorable Co., any reaction or manifestation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Majority Leader Flora Leder. So in our receipt of the joint position paper of both chambers in Osami City, finding this position paper a little bit insufficient and vague, I would like to recommend to this august body to welcome other proposals as well in order to have a clear and a clear comparison and contrast so that we can further discuss thoroughly the issue on how much would be the appropriate and affordable increase in the RPT. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Labco. Thank you for your manifestation. That we should welcome another strategy, the proposals is that we can probably compare to the proposal of the chamber so that we can have an intelligent status in this.
Yes, Honorable Chair. I agree with that recommendation that as much as possible, there should be many proposals that this council could read on the different proposals being presented to us to guide us also in our enactment of the ordinance which would revise the fair market values of properties. Because our City Mayor also is interested that we should enact this ordinance soonest because it is long overdue. We had our last revision eleven years ago, two thousand eleven, and we missed three revisions and this is not the fourth revision supposed to be. So that's why this revision would be intending a higher value of our properties in Osami because for revisions, suppose every three years, they have to revise just like what was done in other areas which increased their fair market values of their properties every year. So increase in taxes. But in Sanis, we are not to revise every year or not na pugnanan atong gross atong taxes to the business of the agio, we are not to increase. The agri is not increase. What they, what is the agri okay? The fair market values, agad mansa, palit cinta, the seller and the buyer. The price, fair market value means the price which a seller is willing to sell and the buyer is willing to buy without any other compelling external reason for them to buy and for the seller to sell the property. So on a fair market value then the agency office have to comply with the law. The regulations in relation official and the guidance been given by the Bureau of Local Government Class, B G L under the equation of the government finance. So kininga fair market values, gikanisa mga dino seller na gikulit ang data sa atong otsya sa sir neng ikupyo sepulang ng setipik ipobaysa B G L. So this is more or less fixed schedule legal na ipalos sa atong sir opis. So dinatanimang paggubahan schedule sa dibo sis pasal dyan na ydi fair market value. Kena Iskendlaw ang ibrotinosa guidance sa Iskendlaw ang atol na ihan yo so isuodas na pupaysa proposal. Akala atong mahimo kena ay discussion na itawel ang City Council na maka-adjust. Kiko fair market value na kumajastke na tiblaw sa so katulad part sa besis sa Iskendlaw na hatao tawel ang City Council na mohimo decision. And we are that issue making party na madisay kusengay madon although our output will not be go to City Mayor for his approval. Batis mo sa iskayong para City Mayor because sir, alper mas payo. Luwini, dinila tuti permas para otas ni punitisay arminas. Insaloh, anong di City Council konpasis lo. Munaan kita di may iskuntera eh perwede di the public munaan public hearing para apawakoy lang na sini nito dabilato na isati na ener to property dibilang property so public hearing kendo na increase mapoto bagay for revision sa pagod. Atong may di revise every year di etama keritan kaya cese every year, cese every year di mukeritan na santi kaya kaniro mapoto mapat revision na wati sala kaya diwasin na sa palit sa mga tao na yepanu palitan, watanas simitan, watanas mil, watanas mil. Kelaen, kelaen manan kung bakit sa tao, yam gusom pa palit. Kiyintaneh sa atong agency office kena porla setting mula may diabre ang palit kuya ang kantin basko ikosirepo una mukang maani nga fair market value. Patulas sa kakeyano approval sa B G L kuya iivyo, iivas, ibalik napo video napo baiko video video, hantu takob etu isipisyalang B G L kaniro na fader ako tali kaya ingubok tan sa Iskendlaw sa revisions official and revision passes ingubetan ato season, so ako ditanan. So una akong ikat, hatalakapak mamahayat, Honorable Chair. If ever I may be able to clarify some matters para ma- ma- sitet para atong colleagues to be able to be ready to discuss matter this coming Thursday, November twenty-four, at nine-thirty in the morning. Thank you very much, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Majority Leader Flora Leder. Normally, we have to make the revisions every three years but we fail to do it because one of the reasons is the pandemic, no? So if we have to reset that it's eleven years na, no? We were not able to make the necessary revision of our taxes. So brakkaror nakalitan there will be brak, a big gap, no? Takuang increase or the adjustment of our taxes. However, I believe that our good taxitwins can possibly understand for as long as we will be able to explain to them till they also our side. Kai, we are just but mandated by law to do this. Yes, Honorable Luwiso, you are raising your hand.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I agree with the sentiments of the Honorable Majority Leader Flora Leder that na tingog gitsa, na hulo gitsa because we are transparent. It is part of our principle that we need to be transparent and pakakita sa ato mga negosyante na ay sixty percent increase, one-hundred percent increase, two-hundred percent increase. Of course, sa ilang part, wala, na siya, pero as I have read their position paper and they have a comparison to other cities like Di Polo, Di Liger, and Di Olo, they did not mention that they were having the increase every after year every after three years. So una pag- pagka mula increase, lala dito ten percent, seven percent, ya tuang pag-hundred percent. Pero wala nila na nasabti na it's an eleven year na wala ka na increase. So because we're transparent, wala na shocks sila pero we understand their sentiments, kay? They would do necessary things just to uy ibama, kuwanan ma-decrease na dumay, hindi nila inaan na kadali but I urge, I encourage, and I ask the help of our fellow councillors to kindly also calmly explain to them kabanganat uog pagpasabot nga kining atong ginahimo although unpopular, kay it will affect definitely the economic pangalan sa ato mga negosyante but this is long overdue and we need to implement it and it's part of our kuwan, kana kabaho so kakapangantay na kamway para po nakasabot ato mga negosyante. We just can't leave this to our assessors. We just can't leave this sa ato ang mga collectors, sa ato pa mo ma-explain kaya na amang din haagil ang mga reactions coming from them. So I ask all of us to please help also para matabangan explain, para po kalma ina-kamway para dilidid kaayon isha kuwan, kana bitang kawag nila kana harassment under party, ngano idali, ngano inaanikado ako. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your manifestation, Honorable Luwiso. Any other reactions, remarks regarding this particular issue and concern?
Honorable Chair. Yes, Honorable Chair. Although this is a puppy by the law, we recognize that this a need really to revise every property kame, because I've done this last after election, last two thousand and ten. Una atong pipay, una, twenty year to twenty twenty revision may episode, eh, ay COVID na tabo, naman sa atong asur, twenty twenty they were able to present this to us twenty-two, January pa, twenty-two. But the COVID is the most affecting of environment especially the business men and even the unemployed under land use.
land use. Then ah then terao then ang gusarong dan plus COVID. Muna diyo through their city mayor, their abdominal. They make best to the practice revision towards the COVID 19. Well, we need more taxes. While we have more income to sustain our programs of the age of the new programs like the hostalization program and other program. We could also push it because of the effects of COVID 19. So transparency of the position. Although nganak wa ka memo to mo kay na sana terao man sa COVID. Oka is ayte because we are not covering although not 100%. May I say that open na na um upan na ka baliis na parabaho normal na lang terao. Yeah, beginning to normalize any passes. So sayte oso nga, kanyo is help the one amount of income kay along the best. We're able to sustain our programs and come on time. And now we have to follow law because the disease is calling attention and what I can advise. So in years. Correct, even the chief of city mayor, we advised by the UEP or the business to explain why you felt in making revisions. So muna honorable sir, we will ask the kind, indulgence, and progress of all the citizens na mone picture sent up again. Yeah, Joe last night if people suffer, other na plus COVID. But we have to do this. You stay as alone. Please, man, this has to do this. And we have the guidance to follow, honorable sir. Muna, we are doing this. And if it's a sparring to everybody, muna atong public hearing, you said nothing to write. We are just following the law. But although there are certain in the comments na eh, is the board on? Eh, Joe, dili kita is the law. Oh, ang tataigis, aso deh, dili kita. Katong namalit to yuta, kada ko pa mahal kalet. O, katong namalit ka po sa yuta, mone di basihan. Honorable sir. Ganay, kala palet kalet. Apisa dili kalet din otasagaran. By dili to plan for certain legal implications, honorable sir. So I know that many will oppose. It's anything that without a change will be opposed muna in normal course uh action, honorable sir. With that, I close my conversations, honorable sir, with the appropriate colleagues to help us understand the passes para makatangbalka explain sa kawat. Can't close date. I'm waiting for about these passes which may be owed to the taxpayers. But if we give unexpected assessment of all these things, all these things we do are for the people of Osami City. No more notice, honorable sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your honorable explanation, honorable Majority Floor Leader. So is there any other remarks or comments regarding this concern? Yes, sir. Honorable Sipris.
Uh, thank you uh Vice Mayor Webinarri. Uh, regarding with this matter, uh, it is true na uh sagipadala nila na uh joint uh joint position paper na tinuodto na ang kupras na decrease dahil ang atuang uh RPT mo increase. On our part with sa LGU, ang atuang assessor, igo ramanggutod sila nagpropo uh propose dito sa Bureau of Local Government of Finance. So dibuhat lang pod nila ang unsay angay nilang buhaton. So for the past 11 years, wala taga increase. So moton na honestly tinuodto na masakitang dito this time na sa pag increase kay tungod moraob. I think mga 100% tingali ang increase sa atuang RPT. But muna siya giingon na kaming law is a law. Balao dito siya na tinahanglang pod nato na maimplement. So muna na uh will have to explain lang dito sa ila kay even as kami isamisan na apiktuhan anina increase sa RPT. But sa ato ang first committee hearing nato, ditupot na ko nasagtan sa gi-explain ni cells uh Sir Samuel na katong 281 pages, di submit to nila sa Bureau of Local Government of Finance. So approved nato siya atong 2020 pa. So uh muna na tinahanglang lang dito nato na ato lang dyan i balansi-balansi oh unsay angay win-win situation. But based on, na muta na man dito ni ni Sir Samuel, niingon siya na it was approved already sa Bureau of uh uh Bureau of Local Government. So that's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your manifestation, honorable Sipris Salamat. Any other comments or remarks?
If they are not, perhaps they are receiving their comments. It's coming to the may proceed uh the annual committee report submitted under item number eight. I think we line cardinal business script to little C. And assign business whereby we have five institutions which we approved a while ago, honorable sir. So first institution is Director City Mayor Sames, honorable Henry Andy Junior, who asked pass a resolution authorizing the local city honorable Henry, who had to enter into outside of the city, the memorandum agreement with the public health in relation to the grant of one COVID allowance to the eligible healthcare workers wishing now in rural city hospital. Honorable sir, I yield now to the wisdom or chairman of the committee on health association, honorable Catherine Ling, to introduce an agreement action on this particular item, honorable sir.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader, honorable Leo. The recognition for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On joint motion, I would like to pass a resolution authorizing the local executive, honorable Henry F. Wominal Junior, to enter into and sign on behalf of Osami City, the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Health in relation to the grant of one COVID allowance OCA to the eligible healthcare workers of SN Lab Memorial City General Hospital with reservations.
With reservations being passed with honorable uh this resolution. Uh, pass this on the first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to urgency of this matter, Madam Chair, I would like to pass this on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. And in with this uh resolution stated that the Department of Budget and Management and Department of Health issued Joint Circular Number 2022-001, providing the deadlines for the grant of one COVID allowance for public healthcare workers, particularly requiring the parties to enter into a memorandum agreement. And uh RE Number 11639 provides the basis for the release of funds on the grant of COVID 19 benefits for public healthcare workers who are involved in COVID 19 response and health facilities, Madam Chair. For second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Passing this on the second and final reading, this resolution authorizing the local chief executive, honorable Henry F. Wominal Junior, to enter into and sign on behalf of Osami City, the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Health in relation to the grant of one COVID allowance to the eligible health worker, healthcare workers of East Mlaub Memorial City General Hospital. Motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, honorable sir. The second approved institution is Director City Mayor Sames, honorable Anthony Henry Woinal Junior, who asked to pass a resolution directing support with the Clarin Integrated Otisit Massing Plan of Land Year Didi Dito. It's the first to protection of our environment, honorable sir. I yield by here to wisdom of chairman of the committee on Environment and Natural Resources, honorable John Sackin, critical action on this particular item, honorable sir.
Honorable John Sackin is now recognized as chair for the appropriate motion on this particular issue.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Chair. Thank you, honorable uh Majority Floor Leader. Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution and joint motion expressing support for the Clarin Integrated Watershed Management Plan for uh calendar year 2022 in first reading with reservation, honorable sir.
Passing this on the first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
For the second and final reading, honorable sir, so I move to pass a resolution on joint motion expressing support for the Clarin Integrated Watershed Management Plan for calendar year 20 uh 22. Honorable Chair, uh watershed management is a vital managing natural resources for economically productive purposes and maintaining adequate quantity and quality of water in our area, honorable sir. Uh, on joint motion for the second and final reading, waving the reservation, honorable sir.
Passing this on the second and final reading, uh weaving the internal rules, a resolution expressing support for the Clarin Integrated Watershed Management Plan for calendar year 2022. Is there any comment? More remarks? Hearing that, motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, honorable sir. The third approved institution is the request of the City Mayor, honorable Henry Andy Woinal Junior, for us to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, honorable Henry Woinal Junior, to enter into and sign on behalf of San City, the Dunwana Oval Central Mindanao University in relation to the conduct of the upcoming Central Mindanao University College Admission Test in Osami City, honorable sir. I yield now to wisdom or chairman of the committee on education, honorable Sisil Waiko, to introduce an agreement action on this particular item, honorable sir.
The committee on education, honorable, who you are now recognized with the chair of the appropriate motion.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Majority Floor Leader. So I move to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, honorable Henry F. Wominal Junior, to enter into and sign on behalf of Osami City, a memorandum of agreement with the Central Mindanao University in relation to the con- conduct of the upcoming Central Mindanao University College Admission Test or the CNU CAT in Osami City uh on first and final reading with first reading with reservations.
For first reading with reservation, this resolution is being passed by honorable Sisil Koo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In order to provide Osami's uh students the opportunity to take the uh college entrance exam and to be able to study in the Central Mindanao University, I move to pass this resolution on third and final reading, weaving the internal rules, allowing the the conduct of the set test in Osami City.
This must be a very good news for our students, no? Uh, the honorable is passing this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. This resolution authorizing the local chief executive, honorable Henry F. Wominal Junior, to enter into and sign on behalf of Osami City, the memorandum of agreement with the Central Mindanao University in relation to the conduct of the upcoming Central Mindanao University College Admission Test in Osami City. Motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, honorable sir. The fourth and fifth items of our institution, approved institution are request of City Mayor for us to pass a resolution authorizing to enter into a MWA uh memorandum agreement with Field Products Association Incorporated. Another MWA with Osami's Cable Management and Development Corporation, honorable sir. Alongside, I yield wisdom of chairman on communication study technology, honorable Yigisong, to recommend, introduce action this particular to was decide to enter by Osami City, honorable Henry Andy Woinal Junior, honorable sir.
Honorable honorable Sisil, you are recognized as chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and dear majority floor leader. I'd like to pass a resolution authorizing our mayor, the honorable Andy Wominal, to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Field Products and Osami's Cable on first reading with reservation.
Passing this on the first reading, with reservations as been manifested by the honorable uh in this resolution, motion approved.
And that premise, Madam Chair, I would like to pass this resolution on third and final reading, uh weaving internal rules on joint motion.
Passing this on the second and final reading, this resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Field Products Television Incorporated and Osami's Cable Management and Development Corporation. Passing this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks? Motion approved.
Thank you, honorable sir. We have no pending items. Under item number 10, this is for the reading. At this time, honorable sir, may you have the pleasure and privilege to hear on this matter from our PCL officer, honorable Yigisong, honorable sir.
Honorable Sisil, you are now recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, this coming Friday, November 25, at the Espa Session Hall at Capitol Building, Orocata City, uh I'll be attending. I am authorized already by the mayor to attend the special session for PCL to uh discuss the matters regarding our PCL year-end assembly or our Christmas party this coming December, as well as the launching of the provincial newsletter, Madam Chair. I'll be reporting the said outcome of the special session the next regular session, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, honorable Sisil on that information regarding PCL matters. Hope to benefit you.
Thank you, honorable sir. May you also have now the pleasure and privilege to hear on this matter from honorable Kevin Osamino, honorable sir.
On this matter, we would like to hear from honorable Osamino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader and honorable Presiding Officer. Uh, good afternoon. Uh, this is just about the ongoing uh Asensoo Osami's Occidental Provincial Cup 2022. Uh, the Asensoo Osami's basketball team is currently a leading team here in District 2 with a standing of 3-0. And then uh later this evening at 6:30 to 8 p.m., there will be a match between a championship match in District 2 between Tanggop City and Osami City. And the Osami City team is a team that is that needs to be beaten twice by the Tanggop City. So if Madawang Osami's unya sa Tanggop, the Osami City would compete against the champion team sa District 1. So uh champions sa District 2, champions of District 1 will be held this coming November 24 at Orocata City. So hopefully, uh Madawang Osami's unya sa kunta Tanggop City so that the Osami's team will be uh proclaimed as the District 2 champion. And the venue tonight is at Sinanduli Gym, Tanggop City. And then uh for those who uh for those who want to uh watch the game, uh you can visit or you can watch with free uh no attendance or no uh fee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, honorable Sibrio. There will be no gate pass or no entrance fee?
Free admission, Madam Chair.
Uh, free, very good. So we just hope and pray that our team in Osami City would be able to make it. Okay, thank you, honorable Sibrio for your information. Noted, honorable sir.
Thank you, honorable sir. Thank you, honorable everyone for that good information that you will be a chance to see fight tonight between Osami City and Tanggop City. So, honorable sir, at this point in time, me, we have the pleasure and privilege to hear on this matter from honorable John Bigor, honorable sir.
For this matter, we would like to hear from honorable John Bigor.
Thank you, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Thank you, honorable Chair. Uh, just to inform this of this body, honorable Chair, that uh uh this coming Thursday, um conflict of our schedule on um public hearing uh is our uh regular meeting with the Liga ng mga barangays. So um uh the it is advised, honorable Chair, by our Ong barangays that the the attendees will be the the committee on um attendees to represent the barangay will be the committee on finals and appropriations or the festival. Since the the regular meeting is also um uh required for us to to have there in uh in the the meeting, honorable Chair. Um uh perhaps the Ong barangays could attend after lunch if the our public hearing will sustain until afternoon, honorable Chair, of the unatay.
Okay, thank you, honorable Bigor for your information, honorable Chair.
We would like to thank honorable Bigor, honorable sir, for making a scheduling of the meetings sa ABC in the meeting on the November 24. So lungan sa toong pagiging dito parin parin it is uh, honorable sir, they are moving their meeting to may si Ong Mahal.
Uh, honorable Chief Floor Leader, uh uh we are supo- uh supposed to to move on uh Friday. But as we talk with uh uh our uh president, uh BM San- uh Sancho, uh he uh more members of him. Uh uh he has also a scheduled um uh no, conflict also be scheduled on Friday. So we are, we decided to uh post through the schedule on Thursday. But instead, um the committee on the kanawan on appropriations will be attending on the the said um committee hearing, uh public hearing, honorable Chair.
Uh, where is the venue?
Uh, the venue of our legal meeting uh uh will be at um Dunya Kuswelo, honorable Chair.
Dunya Kuswelo barangay ball.
Dunya Kuswelo.
Would be your vision? Other student must be on November 24?
November 24, plus five.
What time?
Um, the same time, honorable Chair, at 10 o'clock.
You you start 10 o'clock?
Uh, but uh I think the our meeting will only up to 12 o'clock. So after lunch, we could um we could uh attend, no? If possible, but if the our public hearing will sustain until afternoon, honorable Chair.
Okay, noted, honorable Chair. Any other comments?
And coming to the room, uh chairman sa committee on Hoody's of Oh, yes, yes, yes. Thank you, honorable Chair. At this time, sir, we we have the pleasure and privilege to hear on matters concerning the indigenous people by honorable by Lina Batino, honorable sir.
Matters concerning the indigenous people, we would like to hear from honorable Batino.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, I'm Majority Floor Leader. Ako ibaabot, akong dami pasalamat uh sa atong Vice Mayor, especially pa sa ato akong uh halanggut ng mayor, Attorney Henry Andy Wominal, na sa ilang pagbugot sa akong pagadto sa mga indigenous indigenous peoples sa Osami sa Manila last last November 15 to 17. So uh usap ko ka-representative sa Region 10. So if uh represent ang to sa indigenous peoples, 105 uh representative sa indigenous indigenous peoples. So ang kami mga uh nagrepresent sa Region 10, nagdala sagmi of mga banners. So represent ang dito, talang samang sa amit. So uh usab uh nagparid me sa nagparid me dito, then naghatod nila among hatod among mga banners dito. So ano kung di explain ang among banners, so uh about sa mga colors, so namatay mga colors, so uh salinla in kung mga indigenous, ila kung iexplain, ang ilang nganong na sila banners may nato. So nagdiscuss sagmi sa mga Elden Building blocks. So na nakaka napakuha po ko mga uh flyers about ato para nadismiti ako sa mga akong kaugan ng mga indigenous peoples. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, honorable Lina Batino, of your vital information, honorable Chair.
Thank you, honorable sir. At this time, sir, um I allow you to, the honorable Chair, I'm grateful for any announcement relevant uh tell information this you wish to bring forth, you must go study, probably before we tackle item under the team, honorable sir.
Yes, any other concerns? Before we adjourn?
In the midst of the sound of silence, honorable sir, I am now inclined to concede will my most appreciation pass this afternoon. I move to adjourn, leave this session, honorable sir.
This is your decision.